At this time, I'd like to call to order our Wednesday, May 14th Town Council meetings. So let's begin. I still think we need to stand say our pledge and our prayer.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Father, again, we invite you into this meeting today where we're focusing on the budget and we ask for your wisdom, your leadership, your guidance, and help us to always make the right decisions for our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Our first item on the agenda is old business, the facade improvement grant approval for 125 to 127 West Washington Street.
Yes, this guy informed me so that I pull up right beside the back.
The moment.
As council, you know, Mr. Hyde has applied for the facade grant. Back in January of last year, we approved the downtown, if I do want to approve Mr. Hyde for this facade grant to bring to council. We did bring it to council in the February meeting. The council did not, I won't say reject the offer, but they wanted Mr. Hyde to complete the entire package application. So if you look, Mr. Hyde has submitted his application. He has submitted what he plans on doing to the building on page two. Page three is the paint course that he has already kind of put the cart before the board started painting the buildings. So he went with one of these paint courses right here. Then Mr. Hyde has provided a detailed schematic of what he's planning to do with both of the buildings. I take it his council guys are going to do deals and Randy's entirely thorough, so we just kind of go through it. Just got, there's no problem with going through it step by step. There's no problem. If you look at page number three, the package, be the one with the door and the AC unit, Mr. Hyde said he plans on first to remove the AC out of the window section. The storm door he wants to remove, the air conditioner will be removed so that the, I'm gonna try my best to read Mr. Hyde's handwriting, so that the.
Transfer.
Thank you, sir. Transfer of the door can be restored. We are planning to have the finish of the transfer and side lights as well as the door to be stayed to match the two on the new door that he's got on the next page, I believe, which it is, he went down to the baby's drawer in Rocky Lounge to take a picture. These are the doors that Mr. Hyde has already pre-ordered. He's waiting them to come back in. He said these will be the main doors where the furniture store used to be at will be the main two doors that'll be now the new openings. If you look on page number four in your packet with the AC unit right here, Mr. Hyde said once again, he's going to remove the AC unit. He's going to install a mahogany door with the glass and the wall will be redone. If you flip over to the side page, your next page, this is the side street place and body where the old Parks Recreation Center used to be. Mr. Hyde right now is planning to make this ADA accessible with a handicap ramp. He has talked with me and Town Manager Mason about if there was any improvements he needs to do with the sidewalk to make it. He will try to work with the town on that. But Mr. Hyde also came yesterday and told me that he's talking with another contractor who has told him that they may can do the ADA handicap ramp in the front now, just have to come off where the curb right here on the side of body. I think we got an impression of rolling wheelchair up onto the sidewalk, that can build right in off of that. So that's kind of up in there which way he's gonna go with it. Of course, the next page, two mahogany glass doors showing your picture of how it is now at the furniture store. The page after that, the side wall, face and body street, face the old Parks Recreation Center, he's planning to paint that. Mr. Hyde has submitted his W9 which we did ask for, submitted the packet. So he has submitted everything that the council has asked for. We have told Mr. Hyde several times in these meetings that we will not offer neither one of the facade grant money until he provides the receipts. Everything that we need and a CO with certificate, a certificate obviously for the National Civil Inspections, Mr. Hyde is aware of that. Mr. Hyde knows if the council does approve him to be rewarded this money, that the approval letter we will send out, you know, will state that he has to submit the receipts and a CO to show that the building is occupied, he moved a tenant in. Mr. Hyde did explain to me several times that he's planning on going in and having him build some walls in the old furniture store that he wants to split into three different style offices, three office suites. He's looking to try maybe to attract the realtor, attorney, his agent, CPA in that building. He said he feels like a big space for furniture store right now, it's no longer needed, that he can get more if he just subdivided into three different office suites for office professional office space, which is allowed in our table of duties in the downtown district. So council, I will yield back to you guys for deliberation and discussion. Mr. Hyde has full confidence that I could do this for him this morning to present to the council what he's asking for. He is asking for a vote of confidence to give him the reward so that once everything is completed, he can be reimbursed for 126 and 125 and 127 Washington Street. One paid out of this year's facade grant improvement, one paid out of the next fiscal year facade grant improvement. He understands the terms of that also. He knows that he may get one when one completion is done, then it may take another fiscal budget to come in and get the other. He's understood, he's all of that.
My only question is, Randy, where'd he pick this paint color?
That's the question, Council Taylor. Every time I get him, I always ask, I say, Larry, where did you get the canary yellow paint color from? He has a vision. Everybody has a vision of what they see in the future.
The door is beautiful.
And I think the door is gonna bring it out.
I bet it'll bring it out. It'd be great if they could get in the parks and wreck and just put a mirror on this wall.
I talked with him about that recently. He is open to it. He has not committed y or nay, but I did mention to him that it's another one of those main street walls, even though it's not the main one that you see when you first get to downtown, it's another one you get caught at the stoplight that we can do a nice town action.
We're gonna do, huh?
Right, that you can do something on. And he's willing to work with the town. I think if we kind of give him the downtown about before meeting, get the downtown board to kind of give a little pep talk to him, he would do that because I did mention it to him, he was open to helping do something like that.
Well, you know, a break to that if you paint that big wall the same color as he got the front looking like, that would break that, break that color scheme going all the way around the building so it would stand out better.
And I showed him the one that they did tonight, they had the side of Target, the welcome back, that mirror. And I said, Larry, you know, you got a perfect wall, plus somebody painting a nice welcome back build downtown mirror right there. And I thought it would bring some more eyes to this building, I think people will stop by to take pictures of it.
I think too, when we get these applications, we ask for the color samples and we ask for all of those things so that we can have a discussion about what we want it to look like because this is now town money that's going into it.
Right.
So we could make it part of the acceptance of this application that for that larger wall, maybe that's not canary yellow, but that we do some sort of mural with it.
It could be. You guys put that in the stipulations, Mr. Hyde is very silly to do whatever the council needs to do. Great conversation we had yesterday, very excited and I told Larry yesterday, we want to keep him tight when he came back talking with you.
So do I have a motion to approve the 25,000 facade improvement grant for 125 West Washington Street and 127 West Washington Street?
Based on what we've just looked at, Mayor, as long as he is willing to stay open-minded and work with the town as force color schemes and views a concern, I move it with approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. Major Cass, I will draft it every day and let them know that the council is strongly encouraging the business to move there. Any more for this to continue.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the proposed 26 budget.
So page 13 of your packet is the cover letter or the cover memo there. So attached is the proposed FY26 budget, which begins July 1st, 2025 and ends June 30th, 2026. And per the council's wishes at our budget retreat back in April 2nd, it does include a third police investigator, a new garbage truck, monies for sidewalk repairs and sidewalk ADA compliance, monies to continue with eliminating the I and I, the infill and infiltration into our sewer system, and a pay increase for town council members, which I think we discussed last time, we haven't changed in like 15 years?
16.
16. Well, I wasn't keeping track.
Okay.
So this budget overall is less than the current budget we're in right now, it's 2.4 million less. We have a lot of capital projects in the current budget we have that are still ongoing and still continuing. We don't need to rebudget for those because we adopted them last year and once we incur the expense and finish them out, such as the fire station two and Regency and Essex Road sewer extension projects, those things will take care of themselves, so to speak. But this budget as proposed is balanced, meaning the expenses equal the revenue, but that is with the use of $147,000 of general fund, fund balance. Now, the good news about that fund balance is that $174,000 is for one-time expenses and when we get into the budget, I'll show you what those are. It's not for ordinary ongoing operating expenses. We certainly don't want to be dipping into our reserves for operating. Now, having said that, this is the year that public safety was scheduled for not only COLA, we do have COLA in here for the town employees, pay increase of 3%, but they were also supposed to have raises, you know, to keep us current with the surrounding police and fire stations. Unfortunately, there wasn't enough general fund revenue coming in for that. So there's a cost of living, but no pay increases, which is, it's very disappointing to me because we've worked really hard the last three years to get our police and fire up to where they need it to be and they are. And now first, that next budget out of the chute, we're unable to do that. But there is no property tax increase in here, it's still at the 59 cents per hundred. We are proposing a small increase in sanitation fees. This budget having the garbage truck in it, which is a $400,000 expense, we have $314,000, $311,000 in vehicle capital reserve we're going to use for that, but then that depletes it. So, you know, if we want to stay on this schedule of replacing the garbage truck every four years, which is highly recommended, because that truck rolls every day and it's got to be ready to go with the guys when they go to do the garbage trucks, we need to stay on that four-year replacement schedule. And then the older truck, which the new one we replaced, gets put into a second position as a backup or spare. So this budget that as is proposed will allow us to put about $100,000 into that Fund 41, the capital reserve, and so that we can continue each year making sure that in four years from now, when the next garbage truck is needed, we'll have the money in there. And we also wanted to have some discussion with the council about looking at our general fund, fund balance, and maybe talking about taking a portion of that and squirreling that away for the next fire truck. You know, the last new fire truck we got, we bought with money on hand. We didn't have to borrow it, we didn't have to go look and pump for it. We had the money setting in a reserve account that we were able to make that, and I think that was $680,000 if I remember right. Is that right, Chief?
That's correct.
And it was very, I mean, it was a good feeling to be able to buy that truck, pay for it when we ordered it, get the discounts for paying it upfront and full because we were astute enough to squirrel the money away before we needed to replace it and have it on hand. So anyway, the summary, the general fund revenue and expenses are $9,109,183. That's up $180,000 over the current year. And when we went through the budget retreat, you know, Justin and I, I think we explained we have a little more money to work with in general fund than we did do for the current year. Fund 20 is the, should be MSD, not MSA, I don't know where MSA came from, CMST fund. The downtown strong advice report is recommending a budget of $79,900. That's up a little from the current year budget of $60. Fund 40 is storm water, that's essentially the same, $145,192. That's the revenue we're anticipating to bring in from our storm water fees that we impose on all the properties in Nashville. We have Fund 41, the vehicle, that $313,255, which will be used to purchase the garbage truck. Powellville Fund. I may be missing a number. $175,000.
175 even.
175 even, yeah.
Where's that going?
It's on line six, under FY26. So it's, I wonder if I have that year to date right. Well, this is just the summary. The actual budget would pick up through as the right number. So then Fund 43, that's at 1.5 million for Nash County, and that's what we're going to use to continue sealing leaky sanitary sewer manholes. So the total project fund is $16,326,782. And like I said, that's down over the current fiscal year about 2.4 million. So if you would like to get into it, we can flip to page 14, that's page one of the revenues. And what we have there, you'll see the fund number, the account description or the fund description, the next column is the requested. We have notes in there, which I thought was helpful for council to see. Then we have what we budgeted for FY25, our year-to-date FY25 expenses, and then the actual for 2024, 23, and 22. So line three is the current taxes and we're figuring a 3% increase of revenue according to Nash County, so that takes it up to 3.2 million. Year-to-date, we collect the 2.7. But again, with all the new taxable value being added, it brought us in, it will bring in, it will help us bring in additional monies. So motor vehicle tax, we have $330,000 there. Taxes and interest or.
What line are we on, line four?
Five, well, four, line four, in the column under requested. $330,000. And $20,000, $20,000 for tax, interest, and penalties. Rental vehicle tax, you know, these are things we get from Department of Commerce. Really trying to tell you what they're based on. I guess rental vehicle tax is just that, $900 there. Motor vehicle stickers, the general, the $21,000. And then for motor vehicle stickers for streets, $35,000. Interest earned, we up this over the last FY25 budget by about $120,000. The interest is earned on our CD. And how large is that CD interest that you call?
That's a $3 million CD.
And it is pulling some decent interest.
About $14,000, but it was, the reason why it's up this year is because it has never been getting recorded since, since they see the X.
We're helping make that a revenue.
They weren't recording it in the year the owner was making the entry, but you should just record it when we earn it, so that's why we see this.
So we got $5,000 in there for miscellaneous revenue, $5,000 in there for credit card rewards, $1,000 for police sponsorships, $315,000, that's the electric franchise tax we get from Duke Energy, telecommunications franchise tax, $25,000, video programming franchise tax, $38,000, the public education and government channel distribution of 26. Now, that's basically an in and an out of our budget. Whatever we get, we transfer over to the community college and, you know, that's what they use to have the young man come and film our council meetings. And they maintain the local access channel at the community college. We got beer and wine tax at $9,000, alcoholic beverage excise tax of $28,890, sales and use tax at $2,167,000. That's down a little from what we had estimated we give for FY25, but year-to-date, we did that year-to-date, for FY25, it's 1.5 million. So it is, I mean, the publication we got from the league where it helped towns project their revenues, it did tell us all that we were likely going to see a decrease in sales tax for this upcoming year. So we backed that down a little bit. ABC net profit from Nash County, $72,000, library, $5,000. The Nash County contribution to our library of $11,250. Now, that amount hasn't changed in a number of years and we're not expecting it to change for this season. Library fees, $8,300 for donations, $1,000 for book sales. Flip to page to page two of the revenues, we'll continue on. Police court fees of $2,500, police fines of $600, substance abuse tax, that's $3,500, $500 for parking violations, $1,500 for police reports and fingerprinting, the gully fire tax at $889,000. This year, the gully's taxable value has, I believe, for the first time exceeded the taxable value for incorporated limits. That means we have more development around Nashville than we do in Nashville, taxable development. Planning and zoning revenue, $10,000, code violations of $1,500, solid waste tax distribution of $5,000. Our sanitation fees, $917,582. We opt that from $810 because we put the $4 increase, it's a $1 increase in recycling, so that went from.
$6.
$650 to $750. And then our sanitation, we're proposing going from $21 to $24 for 23, 24. So it'd be a $4.50 increase overall. Sales at the cemetery for lots, $45,000, opening and closing graves, $40,000, perpetual care, $10,000, perpetual care restricted, $10,000, moving cemetery markers at $500, recreation registration fees of $30,000. We've got recreation facility rentals of $4,300, FEMA buyout, this is a reimbursement of admin of $2,500. And that project's moving right along, isn't it, Sean?
Yes, sir, Randy, we are. We have had six out of the 13 that have already agreed to do buyouts. Two of them have already vacated the property, so we're looking at probably having the demolition crew come in within the next few months to start doing some, being of them, those houses down there in Indian Trail subdivision.
Yeah, so this is all along Indian Trail. One house on First Street Extension, and she was actually the first one to, except she's.
She was.
Sold and she's moved out. She told Sean and I, she just, every time it rained heavy, she couldn't sleep because she was afraid the creek would come up and she'd have to evacuate. But Sean did point something else out to me, along Indian Creek or Indian Trail, if you drive in the lower driveway, you'll see a large open space on the right-hand side as you drive around the curb. That property is sold three times in the last five years.
Yes, sir.
And somebody buys it, umpteen knowings, they should know.
I was gonna tell you, it's on Realtor.com, it's for sale again.
And they buy it, they call Sean, you know, I want to put houses on it, and Sean's like, it's in the flood plain. Worst of all, it's in the floodway, you can't do a thing with it. Well, nobody told me that when I bought it, buyer beware, but Sean is working with Koy and Ashley to see if we can find a source of funding to buy that. So nobody else goes through that pitfall. It's, I mean, we're buying houses all around that property, there's no sense of anybody. Now, it could be developed if it's elevated, all the houses would have to be elevated two feet above the 100-year flood plain. But again, when the creek floods down there, it's the road that goes underwater and then you can't get to and from the houses, anyway.
Would that be able to be developed into a recreational space?
It could be, yes.
And the grant we were looking at, I've been talking with Superior County too, if we were wanting to try to make it be a, if the town too, a red part, we put a ball lane trail on the side.
Perfect, yeah.
You know, the EEG grant we got to buy the property alongside Stony Creek is one that's come up. And then there are some other funds that Koy and Ashley are working with, I can't remember her name from Wharf.
Tammy.
Tammy Rondo. Okay, yep. So just an interesting side note there, farmers market vendor fees at $700, farmer market resale of $500. And that's, then on page three, if you flip it over, we got $5,000 in there for a league safety grant that we applied for and almost all we usually get. And then we have some transfers from Fund 30, $150,000 there. That's a disbursement from Fund 10 to 30, the cost allocation is no longer needed. So I think we dropped that down from $417,000 to $150,000. But we're still allowed by statute to transfer over a percentage, and that's our percent based upon our expenditures is $150,000. So that helps the general fund, takes a little, you know, all staff at some point work on water and sewer stuff, so it's a legitimate expense or reason to reallocate some of that water and sewer revenue to the general fund.
So Fund 30 is Warren Sewer?
It is, yes. Then we got transfers from Fund 41, that's the remaining balance of the capital reserve for the garbage truck. And then that last item there, $174,177, that's the fund balance appropriation for one-time purchases. And in that, the park, the recreation center, one of its HVAC, we knew this when we took on, when we bought the property, when we had Dawson and Construction Services do the assessment of it. Those AC units are 22 years old, they're at the end of their useful life, I believe. Did we replace one of those already?
Had a lot of repairs on them that have been there. Seems like about every other week sometimes fixing something.
And I think Koy's penciled in about $20,000. If we don't need to, we won't, if we do, we have the money there. There's monies in there for Stony Creek study of like $8,700. We left $10,000 in for new butt audio video equipment for here in the council chambers if we want to pursue that. Now, we didn't make the column wide enough for a complete detail of the notes, but there are three large HVA units at the PD fire station, we've replaced two of them already. This has monies in it to replace the third and final one. Yeah, four flock cameras. I believe, T. Shockley, how many flock cameras do we have presently?
I think it's gonna text you.
Oh, my God. You can hold your fingers out. I think we have six.
Eight.
Oh, yay.
How many flock cameras do we have presently?
About seven, I think, is my luck reading.
Believe me, seven, we're asking for additional ones.
Okay. And if they can get the price down better, they may buy more and use asset forfeiture money. Don't have any right now, but, you know, we're expecting some, don't want to count our chickens before they hatch. But, you know, the activity that our police department's been involved with through the other agencies and task force on drug enforcement will likely bring us in the PD and we can use that money for buying more of the flock cameras. And they're instrumental in helping our department solve crime because they scan license plates as you drive by, immediately run them through the database to tell you who the vehicle's registered to, and it's a real help.
Is this something potentially that county could have been, since they'll be utilizing the same?
Did you catch that, Chief?
You can't.
Can you unmute? Can you unmute?
He can't hear us, so he's on my phone.
Well, we heard him once.
My phone called.
I think he's on my phone.
Just called.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I heard this man speaking and I heard her say something about Kenny.
She wanted to know if the county could pitch in, if he'll pay for the flock cameras.
Something to look into, but hasn't right now. Rocky Mountain, Nashville is majority of the ones purchasing the flock cameras, and county is using ours. I believe the county has four or five right now. But yeah, I don't know that that's something they're gonna pitch in on.
We share the use of ours with other agencies, right?
Over seven-hundred-and-fifty agencies across the United States, yes.
But I mean, the county has jurisdiction in the town of Nashville, so I think...
All of Nashville.
So I think maybe it's a potential conversation to see if they could chip in for at least half or...
And we can encourage the sheriff on that.
It doesn't hurt to ask.
Anyway, that's what makes up the on-time purchases for the most part. Let me double check here on my screen.
That's four to me.
Yes, there's an HVAC here at the library. So again, we have a very large, we have two large units here at the library. We replaced one of them, I think, two years ago and the other one is due, again, on borrowed time. And there, again, twenty-two-thousand-dollar expenses there. So anyway, back to revenues, that column, nine... Oh, and the remaining amount for the garbage truck is all in that, one-seventy-four. So total projected revenue for the general fund, again, is nine-million-one-hundred-ninety-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. So the other revenues, we probably won't, unless you want to go line by line, but MSDs, we mentioned, seventy-nine-thousand-nine-hundred. That's more than they bring in, but again, they have a fund balance of about a hundred So even though they're recommending spending more than they bring in, they have that fund balance to take care of.
They will have a fund balance of two-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-five-three dollars.
So they got money to work with. The sewer fund revenues there on the bottom of page three, so again, we've been informed that Rocky Mount city staff is proposing to their town council or their city council seven-and-a-half percent increase in water and an eight percent increase in sewer. Now, they proposed that last year and the year before. I don't think the increases went into that factor, that amount, but taking a look at where we're at with our water and sewer fees and the revenue it brings in and the fact that one of our largest water users is no longer using anymore, Atlantic Natural Foods, we feel that we can get by for this budget year without having to do an increase, even if Rocky Mount does increase. We got our well number five back on, all three of our wells are producing and you know, they account for about thirty percent of the water that we use in our system, the rest we get from Rocky Mount. So insufficient funds of eight thousand, miscellaneous revenues of twenty-five hundred, service initiation fees of sixteen thousand, after-hour cut-ons, nine hundred, water revenue, one-million-six-hundred-and-fifty thousand, bulk water sales, I believe that sale of water, two thousand. We've got sewer revenues at two-point-eight million, sewer surcharges at sixty. And again, that's down considerably because A&amp;F is, they were one of the major contributors of sewer surcharges that we were having to pay Rocky Mount. They're no longer operating here in Nashville, so that went down considerably, almost half. And then we've got water and sewer taps. We should put something in there for permit for cross-connection, again, at forty dollars and we only have a couple hundred of them and they're coming in over a three-year period. We probably could have put, you know, a thousand dollars in there, we still can, but I mean, it doesn't hurt not to have anything in there because it's such a small source of revenue, it really doesn't make a difference. Grease fats and oils of ten thousand, late payment fees of one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, which is probably budgeted low. I mean, you can see year-to-date, we're at one-hundred-and-thirty thousand, which, you know, that, those things surprise me, you know, so many people... I understand not everybody's got the money to pay their water and sewer bill when it's due, but when the late payment gets applied, it's just more money you gotta pay out that conceivably is avoidable if you pay on time. So we're budgeting one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand in late payment fees. And then of course, the last revenue line item is the net asset appropriation, two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand, and this is a cost to cover the facility at Public Works. So maybe an explanation on that, Tressa?
For the fund balance?
Yeah.
So the water and sewer fund, of course, they're making money, but they have fund balance, so they plan to set the...
We talked about building a large shed so that our back truck, our garbage trucks, the road grader, all of our large equipment can fit under roof and not sit out in the elements. And we got a cost estimate from the company here in town. I forget what the name is, what's the name Brian? They're down by the Dunkin' Donuts.
Property Works.
Not Property Works, one right next to them. Anyway, yeah, and they gave us a proposal for building one and it's three-hundred-thousand dollars. And this has a concrete floor. So you know, we have reserved money in the water, in Fund Thirty of water and sewer and we would use two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand of that, and you'll see that when we get to the expenses to build that.
Are we looking to turn out the existing shed?
Yes, the existing one would come down and this would be put in its place.
And we can talk about it, maybe some of that money, take it down and give it to...
Use it in terms of...
Give us some money for it. Yeah, probably outside town. Storm sewer revenue, one-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-two, and that's what we project to bring in on our stormwater fee. And we have Fund Forty-One, which is the capital reserve for vehicles and we're transferring into that, three-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. Poll bill, you know, you hear me say this every year, but maintaining twenty-six miles of roads and streets and only getting one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars a year to do it, it doesn't come anywhere close to maintenance costs. So a lot of that has to be supplemented from property taxes, but we get one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar pile bill money and we're going to be using that on the expense side for streets and sidewalks. So then continuing on with revenues on page five, a lot of those are just project funds and we're not proposing any activity in those until you get to the very last page. We're going to be adding a project fund and that's that one-point-five million from Nash County that they're sharing with us at state allocation, that seventeen million or eighteen million dollar state allocation that Nash County got and they're sharing it with the municipalities in Nash County. So we're in line for one-point-five million there. So that brings total revenues to sixteen-million-three-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight. I'm sorry, seven-hundred-and-eight-two, thank you. So then we can go to expenses. The first set of numbers you see there, those are, that's four-ten, which is the town council and the very first line item there, we increased salaries for the council members, I forget what they are right now, but what we proposed amount is eighty-four-hundred...
Forty-eight-hundred is ours.
And six thousand for mayor?
And six thousand for the mayor, so the mayor's gone to eighty-four and the council to six thousand. And as Laurie pointed out, you know, we've been operating at those same fees for the council for the last sixteen years.
Are we getting the back pay working in it?
In front row.
Make some ready for you sworn in.
You know, and that thirty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars, that assumes every council member attends every meeting that we have on the schedule. And you know, that doesn't always happen. So sixty-five-hundred dollars of legal expenses, which if you look at year-to-date, I'm really hoping that, you know, having gotten past a few projects that we needed a lot of legal advice on, it's going to go down. We're at nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty dollars year-to-date legal expense for the council. For the most part, this is the cost of having the attorney at our council meetings and the occasional question that they research coming from the council. So we got FICA, healthcare, insurance premium, travel and training, supplies, insurance, workers' comp. So the total budget for the town council is fifty-four-thousand-forty-nine dollars compared to forty-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-five for the current budget year and year-to-date, we're at forty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty. Any questions on the council budget? So we do have traveling and training in here. Now, when council member Lump went to the Main Street program, I think we took that out of MSD and not out of the training budget here. The next set of numbers is four-twenty and that's administration, which is myself and the town clerk Lou. And because we both spend a lot of time working on water and sewer stuff, we split our salaries and our benefits of seventy-thirty. Seventy for general fund, thirty percent with Fund Thirty, which is water and sewer. So and again, this assumes a three-percent COLA, cost of living increase, and that's one-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars. We've got legal fees in there. We're on page one of the expenses. Sorry about that. So attorney fees at forty thousand, and again, you can see year-to-date, we're already at And we got the rest of the, the last bill we got took us through, well, to the middle of March, so we got March, April, you know, and we have had some legal expenses there that are above and beyond with the bankruptcy of Atlantic Natural Foods and trying to make sure that we are able to get what we can out of that bankruptcy. Keep our fingers crossed. We're an unsecured debtor for the most part, with the exception of the one-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand they owe us for personal property taxes. The balance of that two-hundred-and-forty is water and sewer. If they had paid up their water and sewer bill in February, then they ran three weeks in February and did production and I think the bill with sewer surcharges were like fifty-three-thousand dollars. They used a lot of water and you know, we just happened to put the sampler in the sampling pit out front and got a fresh sewer surcharge sample and it was very heavy in BOD, COD, nitrogen, phosphorus, you know, the P and K and total suspended solids, very heavy. I don't think anybody in the plant was cleaning up with a brush and scoop shovel, they were just washing it all down the sewer. And that's the explanation for their sewer surcharges being so high. So anyway, I got off task a little bit there. FICA and health, health insurance and state retirement and 401K, you can see the numbers there. Telephone and postage at twenty-nine-hundred, travel and training, twenty-five-hundred, advertising two-thousand, supplies twenty-one-hundred, dues and subscriptions at ninety-nine, nine-thousand-nine-hundred, and you can see what those are. Adobe, the clerks dues, the school of government membership, the North Carolina City-City Managers Association, which is an organization I belong to, the chamber dues, the league, what else we have in there? That's pretty much it. Then we got property and bonds and insurance at twenty-four-hundred, workers' comp at twelve-hundred, software and data support, sixty, eighty-six-hundred, and that's where the iPumpis software mostly is at, and a few other things. So total administration is two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-sixty-seven dollars. And that's down from two-hundred-and-ninety-nine, which we budgeted for the current, I'm sorry, the three-hundred-and-twenty-five, which we budgeted for FY twenty-five. Main reason for that is when Tressa and I were working with Melanie Bryant, our consultant for tracking our expenses, and she's also on the payroll from the LGC to give advice to small towns such as us on budgeting. She said, again, we hadn't split loose salary to the two to seventy-thirty with water and sewer and this budget does that.
And when I took the training, they said it's, I'm better not to have a lot of transfers in between funds, so you should just split your salaries and budget them there. So I'm seven-one, me and Trey are gonna make sure that everybody's having a split according to our budget.
It's just a matter of going into evidence or software and programming the payroll and then it'll kind of pack what needs to, to the water and sewer fund. Any questions on Fund Twenty, or Four Twenty, I'm sorry, Department Four Twenty? Next is HR, which is four-fifty, and we've got full-time salaries in there for our HR director. Again, we're going to split Trey's salary, seventy-thirty with Fund Thirty, if it was less than that, is that correct?
For Trey?
Yeah, or was it always seventy?
It was just the, you and Trey have always been seventy-thirty.
Okay. Seventy-thirty, professional services. Trey's got a note in there that he doesn't foresee any legal expenses, but he's got some in there for the gas fee reporting of three thousand and some others just in case comes up. Twelve-thousand dollars there, and we've got FICA, that's four-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-nine. We've got the health insurance for Trey, the retiree insurance premiums. Just a quick note on this, I think it was in nineteen ninety-eight, the town had retirees that we were providing health insurance for.
Nineteen ninety-two. It was nineteen ninety-two.
Ninety-two. Maybe you can explain it quick.
Yeah, and I'm going to go and apologize Tressa, I don't think, say that needs to be about forty-four thousand, we're getting more premiums in. So we have five current employees or retirees that we pay insurance for, four of them are, we're doing Medicare supplements for, which are average around four-fifty a month, but the increases I've gotten this year are about a seventeen percent increase on their Medicare premiums so far. We also have one retiree that gets insurance off the private market, they're not Medicare or Medicaid eligible yet, which is running us around fifteen-hundred dollars a month and I'm expecting an increase for theirs as well, haven't seen it yet, so yeah, so that's what we're going to look at this year.
But those increases go in January?
Yes, January one.
The calendar year, and this is on fiscal year, so we're going to have to budget for FY twenty-six, half of the estimated increase. State retirement, eighty-three-hundred, 401K, seventeen-hundred. We've got phone, travel, advertising, supplies, employee appreciation, which is the same amount that we budgeted for the current year at three-thousand-two-hundred. Safety, that's drug screening backgrounds, those costs have been increased. Twenty-five... Twenty-five hundred, year-to-date, we're at twenty-four. We budgeted a little, a little less than the current year, but then looking back, we hadn't, we hadn't expended everything that we did budget, so that's why we backed it down. The EPA program, employee, what does that stand for, Trey?
EAP, Employee Assistance Program.
Employee Assistance Program at twelve hundred. Do some subscriptions, insurance on employment, workers' comp, software, data support, and no computer for Trey this year, it's kind of, keep what he's got. Hundred-and-forty-five thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. And again, that's, that's down over the current year budget, and it's a little less than year-to-date for our current budget. But again, shifting around some of those costs that we split between funds is the reason for that. Any questions on HR, human resources budget? General fund for finance, this is Tressa and Rebecca and Yvette. I'm sorry, it's Rebecca and Tressa. So again, we've got their salaries split fifty-fifty between general fund and Fund Thirty. And again, this includes a COLA for about three percent on the pay. Part-time salaries in there, five thousand. Is that what we use when Melanie comes?
Yeah, if she comes, but I didn't really use her day minutes since she might come one more time maybe.
Okay. I don't know if you've heard me say this or not, but Tressa's doing an amazing job as our finance director.
We can tell.
She seems to be on the ball with all these numbers you're going at.
Well, just, you know, the audit, I mean, again, the audit took time, but we had to clean up assets on our books, which had been done probably fifteen years. I mean, that was a three-week endeavor, just to get our assets on books up to date. And, you know, our past-
Many headaches, right?
Our past finance directors knew it was a monumental task and just put it to the table. Certainly did, nailed it. So we've got full-time salaries there at sixty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-six, five thousand for part-time, professional services, again, that's the cost of the audit. VC Three, which is, you know, we lease our phone and some of our, some of our IT equipment from them, and of course, I don't know if it's in that or one of our other line items, just the cybersecurity costs when we're talked about have increased. So when we started with VC Three, including all the equipment, it was about one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand a year, and this is our fifth year with them, where we're looking like at two-forty now. But we've had to have black web monitoring, we've had to increase, add to this budget, two-part authentication for logging in for Microsoft 365 and some of our R-Logman software. So, you know, anytime the employees log in, they're going to have to have their cell phone with them and get an access code texted to them, put that in just to log in. But the cybersecurity costs, and I don't know any way to really reduce them, you know. Coyn and Chris Acac, we've looked at two other companies that do pretty much the same thing VC Three did. We took our VC Three, blacked out what we're paying, so they could see what they're actually doing, and then we got a price from them. Both of them were fifteen to seventeen percent higher than VC Three for the same thing. It's just, you know, it's so vitally important that we have proper cybersecurity, because we have our customers, water and sewer customers, bank information on cloud, and we can't afford to have that information breached and put out on the dark cloud.
Randy, do you, do you think it's true for us to, because our year-to-date factor on professional services, year-to-date, we're at forty-four thousand, and we've got budgeted thirty thousand, do you think it's a good idea for us to drop a deadline?
So what we did this year, the reason why the cost allocation went from four-hundred-and-seventeen thousand to the one-hundred-and-fifty thousand is because in prior years, Fund Thirty never paid any of the audit costs, so it's split. So when you get on down to the bottom, you're going to see, it's cut off, but we moved thirty percent of the audit to Fund Thirty to give the general fund. Because in all, in, you know, prior years, the general fund paid for the entire.
So the whole thing will still be around forty-five thousand, it's just coming to two places.
Okay, I got you.
And that's going to go for any, like, the website, I added a non-departmental for the enterprise ones as well, because they don't pay anything for the website. They don't, they were not, well, they probably were, but we were doing a big cost allocation of transfer, like, four-hundred-and-seventeen thousand. But now it just, you can see, when we get ready to pay the bill, we're going to split it to my third. But the next thing that will help whoever's coming, so.
So FICA, healthcare, state retirement, 401K, phone and postage, internet is in there at fifty-two, five, travel and training, and, you know, Tressa's department takes full advantage of the online, so we don't have to travel for different things, which is nice, but still stay up on things. And then a part of that is the Edge Conference for admins.
Right, so admins is having a-
That's our software.
Conference in August, and of course, we're going to pay for it this year, because we had to register, so I didn't have to pay an extra fee. And next is the year, but it's a week program to basically go over the software and get it built to each module, and they'll show you some different things, and then I can tell them what to help us. I guess network.
It pays off. You've got problems, get a hold of another user, and we do it this way. So advertising, that's the annual property tax, Lincoln property tax, we have to publish in the newspaper. Supplies, dues and subscriptions, insurance, bond, workers' comp, software, data support, that's at twenty-two thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-five. It's down a little bit, but again, you know, we've got, we're going to be splitting that more so than we have in the past. So total finance department budget, one-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, six dollars. And again, that's, that's down from years past, but again, we're splitting that audit cost and other things with the Fund Thirty. Any questions on finance? Flipping the page then, we go to planning, and this is Sean and Thomas Seem. We've got full-time salaries in there, again, gas, oil and tires, and then two vehicles, now those are hand-me-down vehicles. Sean and Thomas Seem both like to have new vehicles, but they are gracious and appreciative to have what they have. Sean did give up his old park and rec pickup, it bit the dust. I think he took it back and, out back and just shot it. And he's, he's got a retired police car now that he's going around in too. And Thomas Seem has that, that black-
AJ John.
Yeah, it looks like a-
PT Cruiser. No, it's not a PT Cruiser.
It looks like it.
I used to have one.
So we got seven thousand dollars in there for continuing to work with Michael Harvey to bring our unified development ordinance up to code. We have some more flood work, flood plane regulations too, and that, and then of course, from time to time, attorney fees on different, mostly nuisance abatement stuff that they're working on. We've got the FICA, the healthcare, the state retirement, 401K, postage, telephone, email, internet there, fifty-four hundred, travel and training at five thousand, and this is the town planning department having certificates. What are those all included, Sean?
Those are the state certifications that Thomas Seem and I have through DNC DOI and through the school, NCAAZO, the zoning officials, that we have to go to those, be in a conference and stuff like that to get our C's, we have to keep taking.
So Randy, the line fifteen and sixteen are down for click code enforcement, and year-to-date is pretty high, is that those numbers fair?
Sean, I'll defer to you.
Yes, sir, no problem, Randy. Contract services, we kind of drop that down. We're going to see this year if we can let our vendors do the jobs that all the lots where people live at, and maybe try to allow my plumber works guys on those vacant lots of all the devastated homes that we tore down, to see if those guys could just run over this, it's just a vacant lot, run over with a tractor and bush hog with zero turn, to kind of balance it out conservatively. Ah, minimal housing is down, house is a lump. Last year, we have not tore down no house, not from something, we had nothing blighted or no significant damages. I think two years ago, we went through that big storm, turned on all the blighted properties, we kind of cleaned the town up. There is one that we're planning to tear down in the future that may go through this, but it shouldn't be able to be as much as we thought. Now, like I would say with that line item, it could be a disaster we had with the storm when somebody ran into it that we may have to tear down, but good thing was I only did get it back secured to safety.
Maybe the only other thing to point out is computers. Sean is due for a new computer, he's been getting by with what he's had ever since he's been here.
And Coyn is not here, but when we had, I mean, with VC Three, I think it was forty-one? Computers, whatever. Need a new place? It, it was twenty to thirty computers that needed a new place. We've got five this year. And this is officially here, but they're dated, they're not, they're not going to take the, what is it, the new office, so.
Because I don't think they've been converted over to a team yet.
Right, right, it hasn't been converted.
Yeah.
And they won't hammer it.
Yeah. Going from Windows ten to Windows eleven. So total for planning is two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars, and that's up over the current year. Got a few extra, few additional things in there, of course, the COLA for employees, and a lot of the VC Three is in there, and that's an increase. Any questions on planning? Any of the line items? If not, we'll go to five hundred, which is buildings, and whose salaries in this?
It will be Chris and Aaron.
Do all of you know Aaron Taylor?
Oh, yeah.
So we got, we got salaries in there with, again, COLA increase, overtime, hard-time salaries, professional services. And the FICA, healthcare, state retirement, 401K. Continuing on with postage, and then this, these are the utilities for our various facilities. Got town hall, we got the police fire complex, we have library, parks, public works, and now station two. You can see what we budgeted for utilities, gas and electric at all those. And then the next line items there are maintenance for, you know, different things that have to be repaired and replaced, and upkeep on town hall, police and fire, library, council chambers, parks and rec and public works, and four thousand for most, five thousand for public works. And we got equipment maintenance, seventy-five thousand, that's the VC Three data backups. We have file servers that have a data backup in them, and that's, that's the least piece of equipment. Most of that seventy-five hundred is that. And then we've got vehicle maintenance, gas, oil and tires, supplies at seven, fifty-seven hundred, and then we have some safety supplies. We did purchase automatic calculators for all COLA facilities, including the library here, so it's down from the current budget of three-thousand-two-six, just to five hundred, because all those things have been purchased. Uniforms for Chris and Aaron, contract services, VC Three, Dawson tests, the UniFirst, the fire, the BFPE is for the fire extinguishers, and once a year, they have to be taken out, flipped over, hit with a rubber hammer, put back in, and you pay thirty dollars. And Johnson Controls, I believe that's the security system that we have at the police and fire complex. We got bonds and insurance, workers' comp, and then improvements, we didn't have any for town hall. We do have some capital improvements for police and fire, that's that HVAC unit, and putting new vinyl siding on one of their outside sheds, storage sheds they have. We got the ten thousand in here for audio/video improvements here in the council chambers of ten thousand. We've got the capital improvements for park and rec of sixty-seven thousand, twenty thousand is for Glover Park, and then the HVAC at the rec center.
If my memory's straight, a minute ago we talked about these things, that was actually on the income.
Yes.
Talking about where it was going to be extended.
Yeah. Of that fund balance that we're appropriating to use for these on-time expenses. So then equipment under, under five thousand. We've got a floor machine for Aaron to buff the floors. Last time he did it, he used the same machine that we carpet clean with, it didn't work, but it gets a little squirrely out there on the floor with no resistance, and you've got to really hang on to that thing, or it'll take off across the parking lot on it. A little different machine for buffing floors. Any question on buildings? Total is three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-fifteen, which is up a little, but, you know, again, those HVAC units improvements is the bulk of that. Next is Fund Ten, or Five Ten, which is police. We have our full-time salaries, and that does include third investigator and paid holiday, holiday pay, part-time salaries, professional services, and the note there is VC Three for twelve months and then legal fees. The police department doesn't have a ton of legal fees, but from time to time, they do. And Chief Shockley is real good about, you know, asking only when he needs to, so keep our legal fees down. So we've got FICA, health, health insurance, state retirement. On the next page, the 401K costs, we still have that separation allowance, that's for previous police chief. I don't know if you're all familiar with the separation pay that municipalities, local municipalities are required by statute to pay. If you have a police officer who retires with a certain number of years, there's, you have to pay them from their retirement date till they reach age-
Sixty, sixty.
Sixty-two?
Sixty-two, yeah.
So I think for, we dropped one off, so now it's just our former police chief, Anthony Puckett, and I think after, after FY26 or four, five years? Maybe six years long.
Oh, about six.
Yeah. Six years long.
Was there ever a talk with the latest legislators about changing that?
Yeah, but it doesn't register high in there to do this. It's, it's legislation that was passed years ago. It was an unfunded mandate, in my opinion. Like, so much of the legislation that's-
It's really part of small payments. It's really-
Well, yeah, it is. And we have phones, postage, email, hotspots for the police vehicles, the telephones, the cellphones are all in there, AT&amp;T, the internet. Oh, we are switched over on internet, we are no longer with Granite, our provider, we are all cloud-wise right now. I'm sorry, Ripple, yeah, cloud-wise, changed your name to Ripple. And things, things are going well. They, they went bad with Granite once we got switched over to them, but it was a nightmare to get switched to them. And I don't know, for the two, three thousand dollars we- And I don't know, for for the two or three thousand dollars, we say, the grief and aggravation switching over to them and switching away from them. It wasn't worth it. But things should things should learn after the fact. Equipment maintenance at twenty-five hundred, vehicle maintenance at fifty-five thousand. Um, advertising at seven fifty, gas, oil, tires at a hundred thousand. Uh, supplies at twenty thousand. Police K nine supplies at sixty-five hundred, safety at five thousand. Traffic cones, tra- uh safety vests, things like that. Um, uniforms, which is boots, uniforms and uniform accessories, twenty-five thousand. Plain clothes allowance of four thousand, dues and subscriptions seventy-two thousand. Now that's that's up quite a bit over the uh current year that we budgeted only twenty thousand. And Chief Shockley, are are you, can can you chime in on uh that seventy-two thousand on dues and subscriptions to give the council? A little more detail on what that all includes?
Yeah, so every time that we purchase a fly camera, it is about thirty-six hundred dollars uh for each camera and an annual fee that's reoccurring of three thousand. And although there have been talks of spinning out of different funding sources, uh you don't want to get in a habit of paying bills from something you're not guaranteed. So here recently, what we have been doing to every single fly camera had been purchased out of uh asset forfeiture, but the reoccurring expense has been coming out of uh fund balance. Uh, because if we were to stop getting asset forfeiture, you stop getting, you know, you stop paying your bills.
And what else do you have in there? Spy point, covert track?
Yeah, looking for it, uh covert track, uh Ness, Clearview A I, uh Spy Point. Uh Celebrite. That's all off the top of my head I can think of.
And Litz.
And Litz, yes.
So those are all programs the police department and our investigators choose to do a top-notch job with their with the forcing here in Nashville. Um, bonds and insurance at uh thirty-eight thousand one hundred, workers comp at thirteen thousand, drug enforcement is ten. Software and data support is seventy thousand, and again, that's up about twenty thousand over the current year. That's uh. Chief Shockley, did you want to give the council some explanation on what's all in your software and data support line item?
Yes, so a lot of these things are things that we have to have. Uh Motorola has inevitably gone up, uh that's the radios we use, it's not really something we can cut, cause police officers have to have radios. Uh D C I N is a national database that we run uh criminal records through. Uh, Central Square is on our reporting data uh database, they're not worse, uh it's a mandated reporting software. Uh, we chose Central Square, I think we pitched that to you in twenty nineteen. Um, that's what we've used since then from Southern, uh we was called Southern Software, it was an R M S system. We switched over and now everyone at the county, I think with the exception of Charles Furb is using that. Uh Adobe self-explanatory e-crash is what we do our rec reporting system through. And then there's one on my sheet that is.
Clearview.
Clearview A I, uh that is a investigative software that we use as well.
Uh law enforcement equipment at at twenty-five thousand and and that's down considerably over the current year. Do you recall why we put that at twenty-five thousand?
It was radios.
Oh, radios.
Yeah. We bought a automated switch over for the radios for cell tower communications. And last year is when we, I believe what had happened is two years ago, we had intended on purchasing them. Uh, we had it budgeted and then we had to make a budget amendment that cover them for this current fiscal year. Um, and seeing that we're not gonna have to replace all of this upcoming year, that's why it's repished.
Uh, computers at five thousand, equipment under five thousand, ninety thousand. Um, that that one's down from the current year too. Got web gear, taser, cartridges, guns, ammo. Chief Shockley, an explanation why it's uh less than what we budgeted for the current year, why it's down?
Um, we made some cuts, um ammo, we switched to something a little bit cheaper. Uh, we saved a town roughly, I mean, just ballpark, fifty thousand dollars. And we switched to nine millimeters ammo for nine millimeters, significantly cheaper than a forty caliber weapon. Uh, those new handguns shoot at the line sometime around July. Um, they're R M R optic ready, the whites, we put all of them are a lot smaller, uh still put out the same amount of weapons. Um, taser cartridges, the lease program we're on, uh we've been trying to convert over from the taper taser sevens to the taser tens. Uh, and the expenses include all the training materials once we switch to the taser tens. Uh, the weapon is for the battle belts, uh which is a classic uniform, it's the battle belt they will wear with all their uniform.
Okay, and then vehicles, a hundred and fifteen thousand, that that's up, uh we we're adding more leased vehicles to our fleet. Um, what do we have, six, we will have six total?
We have six currently, I believe, uh and I think we agreed upon getting three additional this year to the lease program as well.
So total police, uh two million nine hundred sixty-seven thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars. And that's up slightly from the current year of two point eight million. But but again, you can see, uh we we had increases, uh again, with the V C three and and uh Motorola. Any questions on the police budget? Uh next, we have uh the fire department budget. And we got full-time salaries in there, again, with the cola, holiday pay, part-time salaries, professional services. And that that went from thirteen thousand to twenty-five thousand. And that increase was due mostly to uh V C three and and the expenses in cybersecurity that we have in there. FICA, healthcare, state retirement, four oh one K retirement, the pension fund for the volunteer department, two thousand. And we have a phone postage, email and internet, same. Travel and training at fifteen thousand, the same, building maintenance for the fire, same at uh two thousand dollars, kind of for odds and ends repairs. Equipment maintenance up a little bit, uh thirteen thousand five hundred. And the chief trainer has a note, they increase annual uh climate testing and air system flow testing. Vehicle maintenance at sixty-six thousand, which is the same. Um, Chief Joiner and Chief Shockley made a change in the copier lease at the police fire complex. Choosing to get rid of the one that's in there and not lease it anymore, but just purchase a a copier that we own in place. So we won't have that lease cost there anymore. Chief, was there anything you wanted to add to that? As far as explanation?
No, well, we had a lease for maintenance and a lease on a machine that was a whole lot of money, so that's the reason why we got rid of it.
So we got uh fire prevention and supplies, uh supplies stayed the same, safety increased a little bit, cause annual physicals uh are more. The uniforms up a little bit there at fourteen thousand from twelve thousand, dues and subscription, four thousand. Insurance at eighty-six thousand, workers comp to twenty-six thousand five hundred fifty. Software and data support, uh fifteen thousand there, stayed the same. Fire and rescue equipment at thirty-five thousand, computers at uh five thousand, that also includes pagers and radio repairs too. Equipment under five thousand, um Chief Joiner has replaced rescue airbags that will be going out of date uh in March. I assume that's twenty twenty-six.
Yes, twenty twenty-six.
Thirty-five thousand, so police or fire budget at two million one hundred seventy-eight thousand one hundred forty, which again is up over the current budget year. But uh again, you got pay increases in there, physicals are more, um everything, just incremental like costs a little more.
Where's fuel? You know, you don't need.
Gas and tires is where our fuel is at.
It's on the previous page. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's under sleep, they don't seem to retire.
I wonder if I did that line item by accident.
I have taken it with every, since we've been doing some weird things like not pulling up the budget report, y'all, um salary is not up, that was our poor actual working. I mean, it's in there, it says.
No, Sean.
There was not an increase in it, we kept it the same.
But there's not even the old one in there. Yeah, it's like that line, it's always, like when I just ran it, I did the budget worksheet, I had to.
Yeah, when when I I went through this, there were many line items that had no budget item, no dollar amount assigned to it, nor did it in the past. So I I made it so it wouldn't show up, and I think I accidentally did that for the uh police's or the uh fire departments. Gas, oil.
Should have been twenty-eight hundred on that, and it was fifty thousand miles is what we budgeted for. But that was not an increase, that was the same.
So was that included in in this?
Yes.
Two million one seventy?
It was included, it's just not under the line.
It's just your line, it's in, okay.
We'll we'll double check that and make sure. Oh, if no, no other questions on uh fire department, we will go to five fifty-five, which is a central building maintenance. Oh, I'm sorry, this this is uh Kevin Taylor. On our uh maintenance of our equipment. So again, um, you got full-time salaries, professional services, the FICA health, insurance, state retirement, four oh one K. Those are all percentage of the full-time salaries. There's not a whole lot of change in in this particular budget. Flipping over to the the final page, total budget is fifty-six thousand five hundred fifty-five compared to fifty-four thousand for the current budget year we're in. Nothing really stands out in there. Any make any questions on that particular department budget? If not, we will move on to streets under general fund. And um, this is uh primarily the employee here is is a Brent. Is there a street sweeper? Is there a back truck operator? Is there a sign installer? And just not anything else you can you can put out there. So we got his wages, uh the overtime, professional services, the FICA, healthcare, health insurance, state retirement, four oh one K, all that in there. Um, phone, postage, email, internet at six thousand. The street lighting is in there at uh one hundred twenty-five thousand, we upped that by five thousand dollars. We we do have two new subdivisions that have come on, Harvest Creek and uh Cardinal Woods. Um, really haven't increased any street lighting with uh what's happening on Birchwood, because it's all along an existing street that already has street lighting. We got travel and training in there at five hundred, five hundred. Equipment maintenance at ten thousand, there's a note in here, this is maintenance on the leak truck and street sweeper repairs. Both of those are are rather high maintenance items. I think that street sweeper, the vacuum system on that, Kevin rebuilds that every other year. And just sucking up that sand off the street, it's very very abrasive. And uh it dures things out. Um, vehicle maintenance at eight thousand, gas, oil, tires at seventeen-five, supplies at ten thousand. Street signs, safety, both at fifteen hundred, uniforms at three thousand. And we got two thousand in for contract services, that's the railroad maintenance at Claret and Drive, and there's a annual fee we have to pay for that. Um. But we did jurisdictional transfer on that, so should be the states going forward, when I think about it. Not highlight that. But it 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 also includes club drive, which is one of our crossings. Yeah, the rest are all on state routes, Farm Street is a state route, fifty-eight is a state route. Uh, special event expenses for Blooming Festival on Christmas of two thousand. We got insurance and bonds, workers comp, equipment under five thousand, purchase of a new weeder and chainsaw. So, street department budget in the general fund is uh two hundred ninety-eight thousand forty-seven dollars. That's down from the current year of three hundred seventy-seven, but uh we don't have the vehicle purchases in there, over seventy thousand. So I, so some of uh some of the new vehicles we had in the parade uh last Saturday. And uh I'm I'm so pleased that the guys got trucks that uh are decent and look nice and operate well. Any questions on five sixty?
Just have a score moment, can we reach out to do progress about our Christmas lights again?
Yeah. Good point.
I've been to here.
This will noted? Um, fifty-eight is sanitation, so this is where we we have uh our our sanitation employees in there at the ninety-two thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars. And again, that includes a a three percent cola. We got two thousand in for overtime if we need it. Um, in years past, it's been less than that. We got FICA, health insurance, state retirement, four oh one K, and you can see the numbers there for that. You know, under postage phones, we we got free, free Verizon phone lines for for the guys that we pay for all that. A travel at a thousand, equipment maintenance at twelve thousand, which is the same as current year. So there's vehicle maintenance at two thousand, advertising two fifty, gas, oil and tires, we we dropped down to twenty-eight thousand from thirty. Uh, transfer station fees, we we haven't gotten any notice from City of Rocky Mount of increases in transfer station fees. So we left it the same, a hundred and fifty thousand. According to our agreement, they were supposed to let us know three months in advance. I I reached out to the the director with an email about three weeks ago, I haven't heard anything back, so I'm assuming there's no increase in there. Yard waste disposal fees at twenty-five thousand. Uh, this is what we 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 pay to uh take our yard waste that we collect and what we chip out to our colleagues. He charges us uh by the truckload. Um, we're we're going to see, Dr. Brian and Chad about this, about, we we used to have at our old sewer plant. Uh, where we took all that stuff. And what we chipped, we put on a pile and rotated it and made compost of it, probably not by the book technically how you're supposed to, but it turned into compost just the same. And uh then people put them down and helped themselves. Uh, where we got in trouble is uh we we got shorted time a few times, instead of taking the street cleanings to the transfer station, cause it's considered, you know, it's got grease and oil in it off the streets. Uh, we put it down there and we cross contaminated our yard waste, man, clean all that out. And we decided after that that, you know, the guys, and then get shorter time, get shortcuts, and that's how that happens, prevent that, we just take it all out to our colleagues. Well, I think we can cut some of that expense maybe if we can uh get back to putting at least what we chip on the street down there and turn it. And uh trying to get the guys to chip more. It it takes time to chip and get in a hurry, it's easier just to pick up the brush, put it on a truck and drive it out and dump it and come back. Brian, you got anything to add to that as far as operation wise?
No, that, I mean, that's pretty much as of.
So we 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 put the twenty-five, um, twenty-five thousand in there, we're we're hoping to realize less. Got supplies at twenty, which is the same, safety, uh down five hundred. Got supplies at twenty, which is the same, safety, uh, down five hundred dollars to fifteen hundred. Uniforms at five thousand, contract services, this is our, our contract for GFL recycling. Now, that contract has a, an annual CPI in it, and it goes up every year, but, um, you know, it, it shows we spent a hundred and eighty thousand year-to-date. What we do with that is we put a blanket PO in at the beginning of the, the, uh, year for what we think the whole thing is going to be, but, uh, last year was only a hundred and sixty-nine, and even with the, the, um, three, three point two cost of living increase, we won't realize a hundred and eighty thousand. So we're, we're good at a hundred and eighty thousand. Insurance and bonds, workers' comp, twenty-eight hundred vehicles. This is where we got the new, uh, garbage truck in there. So sanitation is one million, one hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine. Four hundred thousand of that is for the new garbage truck.
Five fourteen, transfer station fees, we've already exceeded that this year, so is that the way paid the whole fiscal year or?
No, so there, there is a blanket PO, but there was one invoice that got paid outside of it, so once we finish, um, or pay the last bill for the City of Rocky Mount, we'll liquidate this PO and then it'll release the money. Right now it's just encumbered, full amount is encumbered, but somehow that hundred and sixty-nine dollars was paid outside of that blanket PO.
So it's going to reduce?
Right, so right now when you, when you encumber all the money, it's like we spent it, but we, we have it on blanket PO. That way all the invoices for that same vendor are on one PO. So if there's, I don't know, seven hundred dollars of money, um, six thirty when I liquidate POs, that money goes back into the. So that's the reason why it looks like it's, we don't have enough, but there's money, there's money in that.
Well, we're, we're fairly confident, you know, with no increase in the, in the, in the, uh, transfer station fees, a hundred and fifty will cover.
I didn't understand the answer, but trust me.
I don't understand, so if, if, yeah, just like GFL, so we know how much our bill is every month. We, we do a blanket PO and we draw down, so we might have how much is GFL. One eighty, we encumber the entire amount of seven months, we do a blanket PO. So every month you'll have twelve deals on that blanket PO, and every time we draw down off of it, it reduces that hundred and eighty dollars. So it's the same thing we did, so we never know how much City of Rocky Mount bill is, but each month that it comes in, we draw down off of that hundred and fifty. Some, not sure who, but it's okay, somebody put in a PO outside of that blanket that was a hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
So keyed in?
I'm definitely, I don't know, I'm a public authority. So, you know, I mean, I'm not sure who keyed it in, but they may have not, you know, until you teach them, hey, this is where it's going. keyed it in, or somebody keyed it in, and we took the chip, so that's the reason why.
It's Brian's fault.
I like the way you, I like the way you just, I'm, I'm not going to throw him under the bus, but.
He acknowledged it, though.
So that's sanitation. Six twenty is park and rec, and then we got full-time salaries for, for Coy and Ashley, and our part-timers are in there. Of course, we got the, the FICA, the health insurance, the state retirement, 401K, all in there. For, for part-time salaries at sixty thousand, Coy put a note in, may need to be more, rec center, uh, did operate, did not, I think that was supposed to be, did not operate for twelve months. But Coy was confident that he was going to keep it all in mind, so. Travel and training, well, most of those didn't change. VC three, we, we, this part of their bill, state's saying that five thousand, two thousand for travel and training, one thousand for vehicle maintenance, uh, thousand fifty for lease, those are all the same as the current budget year. Same with advertising, gas, oil, and tires, and they're, they're the same. Uh, we did drop supplies by about forty-seven hundred dollars to twenty thousand. Parks and rec uniforms is the same at six seventy-five, uniforms the same at seven fifty. Tree City USA, four thousand, that stayed the same. Contract services for the, uh, instructors of the various, uh, park and rec programs that we put on, the Ford bodies and flatbills. Coy and Ashley dropped that down two thousand to eighteen thousand dollars. Purchase for resale stayed the same at five, five hundred, do some subscriptions down a little bit. Uh, less one MPLC license. What, what is that, Ashley?
That's a license to be able to show, like, movies indoors, doesn't, it's not as different from the, um, alcohol movies that we do.
Copyright stuff on the movies. Um, insurance and bonds, essentially the same, just up a little bit. Workers' comp, again, that's based on gross wages, so that's up slightly. Software and data support, same, AppRecDex software that they use, which has really been a, a godsend for the, you know, recreation, park and rec, on collecting fees for our programs, works wonderful. And, um, no capital outlay this year for them, which was in the current year seventy-four thousand, so park and rec is down a little. It's four hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six compared to four hundred and ninety-four for the current year. Any questions on park and rec?
So there's no, there's nothing in here for the splash pad?
That's a project fund.
Okay, gotcha.
I have to say, just kind of go back to the fire department, it's not in here. It's not, I'm not sure why, it's on the original, um, budget worksheet, it was there, so if anybody is going in, could have been me. I'm the one really messing with the budget worksheet, now nobody else has access to it. If a line is deleted, I'm, I'm putting it back in there. But I'm gonna have all the departments check their accounts and make sure that I'm missing a line.
So does that mean that number is wrong, or the number is separate?
Well, um, that number was missing entirely, that line was not, is not in here. But I just added it back on my worksheet, so I will reprint it, because we have to make sure that the budget stays in balance. So if that one was missing, I just would prefer to just everybody check their lines and make sure that's missing and missing. There was fifty thousand also, that gas, oil, and tires, it wasn't in there. Not sure why, but I do have a ticket in, because it's the second time when me and Trey ran it, account was stellar, was missing. But if you click into it too bad, it automatically delives a line. So it's something they just need to fix. That's why I'm onto the conference, I have one to pay, so I can tell them something.
It's not about glitches.
Yes, it's something they just need to probably do an update and, and clean the bill.
Um, there's no questions on six twenty, we'll move on to six twenty-five, which is the farmer's market. And, um, we, we're, we're looking at sixty-four thousand, seventy-eight dollars total for the farmer's market budget. That's down from eighty-two thousand. But, you know, that, that's less eight thousand dollars for capital improvements at the farmer's market. The, uh, entertainment line item on contract services, line eleven is down from thirty thousand to ten, ten thousand four. So that is some of the explanation, also that, that is the explanation for why it's refused. Anything stand out there in six twenty-five to anybody that you have a question about?
I'm assuming that's that one thing.
Cynthia?
Yeah.
It could be. We get, we got a grant to cover mostly top stuff. So flipping the page, we'll get the library. And, uh, library is essentially the same. Three, three hundred and sixty thousand for the current budget year, and for police, that three hundred and sixty-two thousand. Can just give you a minute to maybe compare the, the line items, because you go down, if anything stands out, that you might, uh.
I mean, I'm saying that really, I mean, that I can see that, and if you fixed it a little bit, was Megan being classified.
Yes, uh, Megan, we reclassified her to, um, assistant library director.
Did you go over the, um, the decrease in the professional services?
I think we shifted some things that were going in that line to another line item.
No, actually, the reason why it's down this year is because, um, we had to, uh, pay to get VC three over to the library, and a lot of those one-time charges, we don't have them this year, so it's only the security and office through six, so it's five eighty, five eighty per month for the twelve months.
It's down quite a bit over previous years, too, so did we boost up round?
So according to VC three and what they're going to service at the library, this is, this is what their rate is for next year. Now, they can have, what, seventeen thousand dollar, um, invoice this year, more, more, clearly, more than one time charges. So basically, what we're, um, ready to do for the department is we go in, pull this line item, see what was paid out of it prior year, in order to verify what we need for following year, so. For the security and office through six, the five is only Megan and Megan that has that sweep. Nobody else has that data, I mean, it's a. But we'll go Megan, too.
Any other questions on library? Uh, moving on then, we, we have cemetery. And the, the total for the cemetery is a hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five compared to a hundred and twenty-five for the current year. And, uh, salaries are up a little bit, again, uh, the cost of living is in there. Professional services, we did drop that down. VC three security decreased because the survey for the new section, oh, that's right, we, we had opened up a new section. And, um, we had Jane Strickland survey out the section K in the cemetery, that was a cost in the current budget that, uh, we don't have going forward. If you flip the page to the next one, again, state retirement, 401K, phone and postage and email. The, the equipment maintenance line item stayed the same at fifteen hundred, vehicle maintenance the same at a thousand. Advertising stayed the same, gas, oil, and tires at seven thousand, the same, supplies twenty-five hundred, the same. Safety at a thousand, that's all the same, uniforms stayed the same at seven, seven hundred and fifty. Um, bonds and insurance went up a little to seventeen hundred. Workers' comp, again, which is based upon the gross wages anticipated, went up a little bit to six, six hundred and forty. Buyback, we left the same, buyback of lots at five thousand. There is an increase in perpetual care expense, uh, some of the main asphalt driveways going into the cemetery. We want to look at resurfacing those. So we got twenty-five thousand dollars in there for that, normally it's around ten thousand for that line, but normally it's around, much less than ten thousand. Our equipment under five thousand at five hundred, so again, a hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars for the cemetery. Anything stand out there to anybody? The non-departmental is six sixty. We got the website in there. Twenty-one thousand, five hundred, um, that's down a little bit, because, uh, again, we're going to split that between Fund Ten and Fund Thirty, so that we do, I mean, then we use the cost to move some of it to another department. Uh, we got the central lease, that's our Pitney Bow, Pitney Bow's postage machine. And, uh, that we lease, central supplies increased a little to twenty-five thousand from twenty-three. Um, the Pitney Bow's one, actually, the central lease actually dropped to twenty-six thirty from eighty-seven.
Yeah, that dropped because if you, um, realistically, if you think about it, the postage machine is primarily used for utility bills. And, you know, the finance department uses it one, one time a year to send out tax yields, so primarily that cost should be on Fund Thirty. Because it's, that's what it's used for, that's the postage and the folding machine. So it's, it's the same thing, you think about the cost allocation, instead of us lumping it all in one amount, it's really separated to show what Fund Thirty's been worth. But the notes just kind of help us, if we forget next year's year, this is where we budgeted the paperwork.
Central contact service, that we, we have shredded, that's a service we, uh, pay to have confidential stuff that gets printed and needs to be shredded. We're going to look at doing something different there, the police hardly use there at all. They have a shredder in the PD that they use to shred things. I think if we bought a, a good quality crisscross shredder, where confidential documents we generate, that, um, all that need to be, and a lot of its personnel stuff that you print, uh, we can just shred that and, and save some here. Now, now, we did budget the twenty-five thousand in there, but we only came up with this, I thought, a couple of weeks ago when we were going through these numbers. Oh, I'm sorry, seventy-six hundred dollars, we, we left that full amount in there. Then I think there's some VC three stuff in there, too.
It's a cloud, it's a, um, it's a cloud basis, so it's, uh, back hill. But those that lines, it's in a little bit. And Lou pointed out, this is an election year, so we maybe need to put something there, I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah.
At, at, or something, would Megan need it?
The, the board of elections gives us a bill after the elections, in our part. So every time there's an election. Yeah, I mean, and I know year before last, I guess, for twenty twenty-four, that's the first time I remember, that was my first year, my first election, so.
What are they charged for?
Honestly, I don't remember, because, I mean, that was my first one, but there's like a cost of, I guess, if you're running.
We should get a credit for the police having to man the.
I agree, that would make sense, if our police have to man that big one up there, but, yeah, they get, they, from what I understand, they split the cost of elections up to the towns that have everybody running. Yeah, to the.
Do they send a bill to the state for, like, the government or?
Well, in twenty twenty-four, we spent four thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars, so it'll probably be more, you want to put?
It'll probably be about that, honestly. I guess, forty, I would do forty-three, they probably, everything's gone up, they might go up even more.
That's number two in nine department.
Elections. Yeah.
That's a big expense.
Yeah, it's not.
I think we can, they would shred, seven dollars a month, eight forty, VC three cloud or something, I don't know, I, I can't.
Data recovery and eight hundred and forty, twelve months, uh, so that's ten thousand eighty on it, we moved thirty-two hundred to Fund Thirty for their portion of the VC three expense. That's the note we have on that, uh, central contract services. Economic development dues, now that we're a member of Nash County Economic Development Alliance, we don't have those. The COG dues are three thousand a year. And then, uh, our contribution to the arts council. We, we always get that back, at least that much every year in the grant, in our council. So we, it, it's down considerably from the current year, you know, we had five hundred thousand in the current year for the purchase of the fellowship church, which didn't happen, and we're not proposing it, uh, for this year, so. Non-departmental is total for, for that budget is six thou- sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. Maybe we'll wait till.
Yeah, I'll go. And, and the reason why it's two is because a lot of things that, that looks like it was coming out of Randy and Lou's budget, that's where it's just been budgeted in prior year, but the website is for the whole town. So, you know, that's why their budget looks like it's a lot lower than just, because we put it in a departmental because it's for the entire town. It makes more sense to be here versus showing it, you know, a lot of the expenses are for the whole town, I just. That part of, of the amount changed.
Any questions on six sixty, non-departmental? Uh, if not, we'll, we'll go to the next one, six sixty-one, which is basically an in and out, that's the, uh, public education, government channel support, twenty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars, and that's what we projected to receive in revenue. That's just a pass through. That's what we projected to receive the revenue. That's just a path to an in, in and out to the community college. We got debt service. Now this is one that, no. This is the debt service on the, uh, on a three million dollar loan and the Edgewood Martin loan um for fire station two.
And the last payment on the garbage truck.
And the last payment on the garbage truck.
It is missing. Yesterday, Randy had already printed um reports, so we're going to re印 again. But yesterday we received um the debt service. We were missing a twelve thousand or twelve.
The lease for fire station two.
We have to pay the annual. So that will also be here. So I have it on my spreadsheet, but it has to be up there.
How much did you say that?
Well, it's a thousand. Thousand north or twelve thousand a year.
We pay it one time.
So we'll have to increase that.
When's that going to stop?
For sure, seven years. And then, well, six years now. We also have the first year, you know, finished. That's the, the way that lease agreement reads. At the end of seven years, we will be able to purchase it and then we won't have to lease it anymore.
And that was possible.
That's right. Yeah, we do have that possibility. So um grant fund on, on the general fund, nine million, one hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and eighty-three. And again, just going through this, we've got to add fifty thousand to that for uh gas, tires and oils for the fire station and the twelve thousand that Justin just brought up here now. So we'll do that between now and next week. That, that's it for the general fund. Uh the rest of uh the M S D fund, um this is what's coming recommended from the downtown strong advisory board. They want to do ten thousand in professional services, sixteen hundred and fifty in travel and training, a thousand in advertising, fifteen thousand dollars in M S D expenses, twenty thousand for facade grants. That, that'd be a total of four, five thousand dollars each. Downtown incentive grants, that's the dig. Twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty. Uh that, that's one we've already approved. The junction for a dig and that's what we project it will be. Once the junction gets reevaluated, the difference between the taxes before he remodeled and after. We pay that difference. And then twenty thousand in, in uh sidewalk expenses in the M S D. So.
That was presented by us.
They're, they're recommending that twenty thousand on the M S D money spent for, for sidewalk improvements and repairs in the M S D district, primarily Barnes Street.
If the town spent.
If, if the town spent, and we're going to spend. More than that actually, proposed. So that's, that's the M S D fund pointing. The next is uh water sewer fund thirty and it's, it's broken up into one, two, three, four, four different uh four, four different budgets. So the, the, the first is uh water and sewer, more on the admin side. And that's a hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred dollars. And that includes that hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost allocation reimbursement back to the general fund. And we have our central contract services and that's thirty percent of the B C three cloud protection. And thirty-three hundred dollars of thirty percent of the annual audit. Or the audits in there. And one of the retiree health insurance premiums is in there at six thousand. Any question on any of those? Now we can flip the page and go to fund thirty admin, which is a portion of Jess and Rebecca, a portion of mine and Trey. And then it also, and didn't make the note, but it also puts a portion of Lewis. So four hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars in full-time salaries there. Two thousand for overtime, nine thousand for professional services, which is up a thousand over the current budget. The FICA, healthcare, state retirement, 401K, again, based upon those gross wages on the top line there. We got phone, postage, email and internet, twenty-six thousand, which is the same that we have the budgeted for F Y twenty-five. Travel and training, we dropped that down five hundred because we hadn't been using it. Uh supplies, ninety-one hundred. We upped that a little bit because year to date, we were at eighty-three hundred on uh supplies and we only budgeted seventy-five hundred. So we've got line items over budget for F Y twenty-five. That's why we bumped it up to twenty-six. And then we've got uniforms in there for Chad and Brian, a portion of them. Insurance and bond, workers' comp, software and data support. Admin's put seventy thirty for all platforms, have shared in that component. And then computers. Maybe that needs a new one and, and Brian needs a new one. So we've got two thousand in there for that. So total admin for water and sewers, sixty-four, six hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and eleven, which is up from the current budget of about four hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three. The biggest increase in there is probably in the wages. Putting more, putting wages to fund thirty, which can be a leap off the general fund. No question, we will go on to uh water operations, eight-ten. And salaries at two hundred and ninety-seven thousand. That's down a little bit from the current year of two hundred and eighty-two. We have overtime in there at twelve thousand, professional services at twenty-eight thousand, which is the same. We budgeted it for F Y twenty-five. We actually had year-to-date expenses there, fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine. Think that's because we had some of that Williams paving in there. For, for professional services. I mean, that, that big sinkhole we had to replace on, by the cafe. You know, that, that was a ten thousand dollar hole. We got FICA, health, health insurance, state retirement, 401K. You can see the numbers there for all those. Telephone, postage and email. Um we dropped that down to sixty-five hundred from eight thousand, but year-to-date, we only spent thirty-six hundred of it. That's why we dropped it down. So that's B C three Verizon cell phones and uh what it costs to the N C eight-one-one, which is the one call service. So we get notified when somebody's going to dig and we go out and locate our water and sewer, storm sewer, make sure nobody whacks it. We'll try and make sure nobody whacks it when they're digging. We got utilities, that's the, the west water towers electric. And we got uh the, well, five, six and seven, and they're not listed in order, but um you can see the utilities for those. So we bumped them all up a little bit. Several of those, we had little to no, we, we had a lot less expense because they would be in rehab and we weren't running them. So if you look in the actual for F Y twenty-four, you can see the, the costs are minimal. But now they're all in service, all running fully. So they're all consuming electricity. Uh the booster pump station, that's the one out on N C fifty-eight going toward Castellia. We, we operate that booster pump station and it boosts the water into the big water tower out by University League. We have our treatment sites. Four and two. These are um, well, actually that C treatment site number four, that's used to be well four. We don't have well four online anymore, but that's still the used water tower. We, we have equipment there that we have to monitor and it's got electricity costs. And site two is, is the one, the well site on Loop Seal Street. It's an inactive well, but we still have some monitoring equipment there that needs electricity. So we've got six hundred there for that. Travel and training uh for water operations at eight thousand. We dropped that down a little. We had ten thousand for the current year, uh but we haven't been using all that. So that's why we lowered it a little. Continuing on on the next page, um we got twenty-five thousand in there for sampling. That's our, our lab piece. You know, we're required to collect water samples on a monthly basis and send them in and get them sampled for components and constituents that they have to sample for. We put twenty-five thousand in there, which is the same we have for the current year. Uh year-to-date, while we are not finished with the, the current fiscal year, so that twelve thousand, one hundred and fifty is going to go up. And then we got treatment site, we got maintenance on well five, six and seven. We, we put ten thousand in there. We haven't used uh in the past, all of that on maintenance. But uh, you know, any given point, a pump could go out and you'd easily have a ten thousand dollar expense replacing one of those pumps. Now they shouldn't, because they're all new in the last two years. And then uh the B P S maintenance, treatment site, B P S, we put ten thousand in there, which is the same we have in current fiscal year. Equipment maintenance at five thousand, which is the same. Vehicle maintenance, four thousand, which is the same. Gas, oil and tires at twelve thousand, which is the same. Supplies, uh water supplies at eighty-five thousand. Uh we kept that the same. Treatment supplies at, at the wells at seven thousand. We kept those the same in the bypass or the, the booster pump station. Got to coordinate out there too. Meters, we left in, the water meters at twenty-five thousand, so we can keep up with the rotation and try and change out so many of those every year. Cause as they age, they, they get less accurate in their meter reading. We want to make sure that they stay accurate because that's, that's our revenue. For water. Safety at three thousand, which is the same. Uh uniforms at five thousand, which is the same. Same for cross connection control. Contract services, we dropped that a little from four thousand to twenty-five hundred. Water purchases, uh we, we left that in, even though we're going to be buying less because A and F anticipating the, the increase uh in cost uh from Rocky Mount. So we increased that to six hundred and ninety-five thousand from six hundred and fifty thousand. We got dues and subscriptions in there. That's about the same, up a little bit. Permits, we dropped that. That would be permitting for, for uh our utilities. We, we haven't realized it in the past, so we dropped that. Bonds and insurance, workers' comp, equipment under five thousand. We dropped that six thousand to five thousand. So total water operating expenses for one million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars.
What was the huge increase on the insurance and bonds this year?
Trey. Um insurance and bonds, we had, we had two large um injuries that had come out of that. And also it's based off of salaries as well. So when our mod rate shifts, that increases the multiplication, the, the fact that they can multiply towards those salaries. So we had some good years that, and it's on a five-year rolling period. So we had a good year that dropped off, picked up a high year, changed our mod, increased it.
But it won't, it won't affect this year because the budget's less than half of what it's been this year.
Trey, he's, he's looking at uh line thirty-nine. Insurance and bonds. Year-to-date, we have thirteen thousand, nine hundred and twelve, but we're only budgeting forty-nine hundred. We don't have any bonds on them.
It's probably a deal from the league, but.
Something getting miscoded on that maybe.
I did just verify the library.
Thirty, eight-ten, fifty-four hundred.
I think it works. I haven't given, but we haven't dropped any bill. We've often picked up bills.
It was consistent for three years.
Oh, you don't have any internet service? Well, we'll have to investigate that and report back. If there's no questions, we will go on to sewer operations. There, there's a slight increase again for salaries at one fifty-one, one hundred and fifty-one thousand from one forty-nine. We left the overtime the same at eight thousand, hoping we won't realize all that. Professional services, B C three and office three sixty-five. I'm not sure why we had it budgeted as professional services at thirty thousand. Year-to-date, we only use thirty-five ten. So that's why we, we put it in for F Y twenty-six at five thousand. And we've got the FICA, the healthcare, health insurance, retirement, 401K, again, based on anticipated gross wages. Postage, email and internet, uh we dropped that a little bit to two thousand from twenty-five because of the year-to-date, it's only fourteen twenty-five. Utilities, and this is lift station generator for, for gas. Uh utility system utilities. This is due for the, this is the electric bill for, for the thirteen lift stations we have. Twenty thousand and uh, you know, year-to-date, we're eighteen. Years past, we were at eighteen, six, seventeen, eight. So we're, we're good at twenty thousand there. Travel and training, we put in at five thousand. Uh sewer system maintenance, thirty-five thousand. That's for Corbin, Jerry Adams. He's our electrician for our lift stations, fittings, manhole repairs, rock and stone. Thirty thousand. Lift station maintenance, um we're going to be putting three-phase service into the South Creek lift station. So we, we bumped that up by fifteen thousand. We, we looked at, and I think I may have explained this, we looked at actually running three-phase wires uh from fifty-eight behind the houses to the farm field to get to the South Creek lift station. And uh we couldn't get the Easman from the farmer to do that or Duke couldn't. So then uh Jerry Adams, our electrician said, well, we can put in a, a buck booster transformer. And what it, what it does is it takes single-phase power and converts it to three-phase power. So we will have three-phase power there. And then when we get that done, then we're going to replace the pumps in the South Creek lift station to three-phase pumps, which are higher horsepower and have more pumping capacity. Because when, when when we get into long periods of, of rain, sometimes the South Creek lift station can't keep off. And uh one of the manholes near, near the waterway there will, will burp, waste water into the creek. We don't want that. This, this will help us cure that problem. Vehicle, equipment maintenance stayed the same at five thousand, vehicle maintenance at three thousand, that stayed the same. Gas, oil and tires, kept that at fifteen. Seems to be sufficient. Supplies, we upped uh one thousand from fourteen thousand to fifteen thousand. Lab testing and supplies, uh we haven't been using all of that. So we dropped that a thousand dollars from eight to seven. Lift station supplies, we haven't been using all those. So we dropped that from five thousand to twenty-five hundred. Safety uh and supplies, we left that at three thousand. Uniforms, we left at twenty-five. Sewage treatment, we increased that because of the, the possible increase with uh city of Rocky Mount to one million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand from, that went up from one million, five hundred and fifty thousand. So we get an increase there. We also put in an increase in sewer surcharges now, again with uh we, we actually, I'm sorry, we, we dropped that, even though there's, there's an increase in the rate. Be, because of A and F, no, no longer being, we dropped that twenty-five thousand from a hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We have a five thousand in there for our grease, fats and oils. Contract services, we, we dropped that a little bit from ten thousand to five. Um I'm sure we're going to have to have the beaver trap to come back again. It's just constant on our outfall line and the waterway le- leading out of uh South Creek, that we have those beavers in there that we have to trap out. Let me rephrase that. Live capture and relocate. Uh system rehab for, for, we're looking at a hundred and fifty thousand for sewer slip lining. System rehab, we're looking at 150,000 for sewer slip lining. Again, following up as we go through our asset inventory and find out, we're going to be doing the televising of those, and when we find them, we're going to, the worst ones, we're going to fix right away. Dues and subscriptions, we were down a little bit, at 3,000 from 5,000. Insurance and bonds, we upped that at $100 to 3,900. Workers' comp at 3,000, down 1,000 from current year. And then 3,000 for equipment under, and that's for a three-inch pump hose, some replacement locator, and sewer jeter hose. Try as we may, we can't quite seem not to get one of those stuck in a sewer somewhere along the line. And then we have to come and get them out. So sewer operations, 2335,988. And then the last part of the Fund 30, the water and sewer, then is the capital projects. And we put in here the $300,000 for the new vehicle storage garage at Public Works. So that brings the total of water and sewer fund expenses to 4,925,225, which is down a little bit from the current fiscal year, up 4,937,000.
Much of salaries, student salaries.
Yeah.
I did find the explanation for the insurance and bonus, so there was two deductibles. I personally don't know that we have been budgeting for the deductibles. Maybe it could be in professional service, but it is something from the lead when they send us.
Yeah, I don't know, we had two, we had two records, we had two sort of work records that would cost more than our.
When you change that budget then, because we might have two X, and two X is pretty reasonable all the amount we drive.
Should be at Public Works, please, yes.
Public Works, we should not have records from them.
So it's a good, we'll put them on spot?
No, so this, this due to Chainless Incident?
That was workers' comp.
That's workers' comp, right. So I need to look and see what was coded in it, I know we had a couple car records that were.
It says, it says incident deductibles, and then public works equipment added, but remember that you have been going through all of the equipment and making sure that everything that we have is.
In a perspective that one of the car wrecks, one was a fender bender, one of them hit a car that could only be repaired, I can't even think of the model, I've never heard of the model before, but the closest place to get repair it was in Raleigh, and it was an $8,000-ish repair, just for their car. So, yeah.
So, well, I can pull the invoices and verify, maybe if you move the professional service. Insurance is insurance, I'm just trying to keep it in the way and like getting.
Okay, no more questions on Fund 30, water and sewer, we'll keep going. Fund 40, which is stormwater, and we basically took the 145,000 in revenue and reprogrammed that to expenses, so that budget is very comparable to the current budget. It's up $192 over the current budget. You can see in there, we got wages, FICA, Medicare, health insurance, gas, oil, and tires. We've got Public Outreach, which is our Clearwater partnership. Drainage projects, $87,443 for stormwater drainage improvement, maintenance mostly on those. Any questions on Fund 40? If not, PAL bill is Fund 41. And.
Well, I think we got those.
I do get those.
One of mine is capital reserve.
Got the titles misplaced.
Need to switch with capital reserve.
Yeah. So, again, Fund 41 is capital reserves, and that's, that's spending that, reserve money for the purchase of the garbage truck, 311,000, $155,000.
And you can mark out a bigger percentage, because initially, we were going to do 200,000, but Randy, you know, he was trying to get the, we were going to cut, and so he decided let's use the remaining money from Fund 41 to purchase the garbage truck, and then garbage saving, and that will, we just used all of the fund balance.
We toyed with the idea of maybe recommending borrowing money for the garbage truck. 311,000 of the $400,000 expense we have in hand, it really didn't seem to make sense to go borrow it. Continuing on, and now we're on PAL fund, which is, and we're looking at $150,000 on street maintenance, and $25,000 in sidewalk improvements. So that matches 20,000 from the downtown strong advisory board's recommendation. They'll spend 20, they'll recommend 20 from the MSD if the town does match that, while we're doing 25 here, so.
Do we have additional sidewalk funds being extended somewhere else? Fun thing. Right, this is just for the PAL bill?
Yeah.
But we are doing more sidewalk improvements, correct?
Right, and I, I personally think we should spend all the power.
Every year.
And every, use at first.
Right.
But it has to be expensed out anyway, because when we report to the PAL bill, you know, we do the report annual, we have to upload the invoices, so if we're not coming there, we're expensing it all out, and sometimes it's just the time, and just doesn't happen, we don't spend it until the following year, so it just comes out of fund balance.
I don't see sidewalks as a.
No, we, I don't have it in there.
Because that was a project fund, and we budgeted for this fiscal year, so we'll pick up the remaining, whatever we didn't see, we'll pick it up in the hour.
Okay.
Same thing with the fire.
Does it show up in here?
I think it's, I went to about $5,000 in sidewalks outside of MSD, that's not very much.
Right, and we still have all of Alston Street to do, I know they're marking sidewalks for the worst.
It would be 55, I mean, 20 from MSD, 20 from, 25 from.
But 20's got to be used in MSD during matchup. They'll only use 5,000 outside of MSD.
The MSD is probably a ballpark sidewalks.
Well, Barnes Street and Church, yeah, but Alston's outside of it.
Alston's part of them.
The only part of Alston is just in between CVS and Church.
And you're right, it's on the other side. Did you find it, Teresa?
It's going to say in the one set street.
The $5,000 is not enough money.
Well, we certainly can, I mean, what it'll take is dipping into some of the, you know, Fund Valves to do, but I mean, it's for a very good reason, sidewalks.
Yeah, I just, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I just see it as such a liability, especially when we have Blue Festival and people walking, and we're inviting them to come walk on these sidewalks that are not even sidewalks anymore.
Next to 40. There's obvious addition. So, Fund 40?
That's stormwater.
Right, but. We have, maybe I put the line out. 425, 7, street improvement?
Sidewalk improvement.
Sidewalk improvement, okay, but remember the.
Because it's still.
We have more complete, we have capital reserve project in it, or is it? We have these, now we have reserve money in the PAL bill fund, we're going to add someone there for this year, just to cover the initial.
How much do you want to pay?
Um, only out.
Seriously, we never know where they're going to be cutting it off.
How much did we spend the last time we did the sidewalk project?
About 40,000.
But, are you talking about the one?
The year before, it was about 75,000.
So the year before is the one where they just replaced the panels regardless of the grade?
Yeah.
Then the 40,000 is when they did the correct job.
It was a different contractor.
Right.
ADH stuff, too.
Right, exactly.
We need to raise 40,000, plus the 20.
Do you guess the number?
It's 576,30,14, that's what it is, 576,943.
So how do we have that much left over?
Well, we have to take away the expense that we did this year, plus add the revenue within that kind of, it was more ready today, so.
Because yes, we should, I mean, we have enough sidewalks and streets where every year, I, that should get done.
Yeah, I feel like in prior years, it, we were not spending all of the power, so it accumulates a fund out.
We could spend a 50 or 100,000 usually.
There's, there's money available.
Right, we do.
Yeah, we have a serious liability.
Yes.
So, so look at 100,000?
I think so.
Whatever is needed to do what we have to do.
Plus 20,000 in MSD, the batch 20,000.
Brian, you and, you guys have been inspecting.
Yeah, Jacob is currently building up. He's putting together a list of, from one side of town to the other. He did a manhole project a while back, where he went through and inspected every manhole, and now we have CTR coatings in town, re-lining manholes, trying to do away with INI. So I have him now kind of diverting from that to a sidewalk project, to where he's going around taking pictures of every crack, everywhere it's unlevel, any hazards, and we're building a list and.
What's the worst?
Kind of rating, you know, good to worst, and anything three panels and under, our guys are going to start grabbing, and then anything, you know, more than that, we're going to hire a contractor to, you know, come in and, where they can bring a truck and pour.
The session is giving rates.
Where we mix bags.
Data also.
Yeah, I exceded stuff.
It's pretty, pretty intense.
I gave that, too. So if we add 100,000 from PAL bill reserves to spend on sidewalks, that would put a total of 145,000 in this FY '26 budget for sidewalk improvements online.
20 plus MSD, 20 plus 5 plus 100.
It's 100,000 from PAL bill reserves, 20,000 from MSD, and 25,000 from PAL.
We get about 170, 175,000 every year from PAL.
And I say we adjust that number, if they come back and say that there are terrible spots that need help, that increase that amount.
You can amend it.
amend it.
Just to note clarity, when we talk about this PAL bill money, and this additional money that I'm going toward sidewalks, which I am in agreement that we need to be and remain cognizant, and keep it as a top priority, but just overall lapping this PAL bill fund, this is nothing that would be able, these funds are not, I guess what I'm trying to say is, these funds are not transferable as it relates to anything else.
It's motor fuel tax money.
Okay.
Now, do we have our hands on this money, or we have to, okay, so can't be pulled back?
You can, so the money is separate, it's in its own bank account, and anytime that we, we get our invoices from the vendor, is, at that point, I do the transfer fund that bank account to our general fund to take care of.
But it is our bank account.
Right, okay. So we should do have control. Best we just have to do it.
Seriously, can't make it better.
I mean, they're going to see if they're spending it, though, you know, I mean, we used to say, they say, "Oh, y'all are not spending it," so we're going to take it from this.
Or like, we're going to give you 75 this year because you're not spending the full amount that we're giving you.
No, it's written in the statute.
Okay.
On how money is distributed.
It's restricted.
Right around that, we've got enough problems, I think we can figure out a way to start using this.
Real quick. With that, that gets us to the end. We've got the very last page, and that's the sewer manhole ceiling, 1.5 million that we've been from Nash County, and we'll continue, as Brian reported, we have the list from our asset inventory assessment from Acquarian Associates, and Jacob, one of our own employees, has gone out and laid eyes on them, so we know which ones we need to get CTR coatings to seal off, and that, that should make a significant reduction in our INI.
And this is going to come as soon as we submit requests?
Yes, I already got a few in, and I got a few more things that I have to turn in before they get reimbursement, and I don't anticipate that coming before July 1st with what they're asking for. So, well, in summary, I guess I just want to tell the council that, you know, the cost of prices that we've had for just inflation, you hear me say this last year, we've had some nice increases in taxable value between reevaluation and new roofs and houses and things, the tax. It's not looking like, at this time, that that increase every year is keeping up with inflation. Just want to point that out, that in future years, we may need to look at, it's nice to have the growth, because that helps you spread your costs out on more property that's paying taxes, and you don't have to increase the tax rate. But, you know, if our taxable income and our expenses continue to raise at the same rate, and expenses a little more for the future years, we're probably going to have to be looking at an increase in the tax rate. Not for this year, I don't know about next year or the year after, but what I'd really love to see is four or five more build labs coming to town, you know, investing 70 million dollars, because on the industrial side of things, I mean, it's great. They come in, they build large facilities that have great taxable value, and we have very little public services to have to deliver to them. There's not a big demand for fire protection or police protection, you know, for the town, they do use our water and sewer, which generates some revenue there, but again, a tremendous amount of cost put upon us. Home on the other, on the other side, you know, it's wonderful to have residents, because that increases the economy, our local economy for everything, but we also have garbage and recycling, and fire protection, and police protection they have to provide, and parks and wrecks. Another thing I wanted to point out to the council, when we look at what the town in Nashville does for our 59 cents per hundred tax rate compared to other towns our size, they don't have the robust park rec that we have, they don't have the police department to the extent that we have. We have public services that have rival towns, 10,000 in population, more than what we have, just because the offerings we have. And, you know, I credit having a great staff for being able to do that, and, you know, good, good control on our budgeting and our spending and projection of our revenues. But, you know, it is interesting to look at other towns our size and see what they don't have compared to what we do have, which is probably the justification why they may have a tax rate that's 10 cents, 12 cents, 15 cents lower than ours, they just don't provide those public services.
We need to record it, it's great, same process.
But sometimes you have to survive.
So what, what's the update on us trying to get fees when new developers come in?
Well, we.
The attachments?
We have to have. We have to have statutory authority to do that, to pass on impact fees, and as you know, we've reached out to our legislators, local legislators, our state representative was not willing to do that. Our senator was, but in order to become law, it's gotta be passed by both the House and Senate, and if we have one championing it and not the other one, it wasn't gonna pass anyway.
Brad, I do need to remind you, let's make sure that we do continue to have a line item or fund bounce to put into every year to prepare for ladder trucks and garbage trucks that we need to pay for down the road where we don't have the financing standards.
And we can have that discussion at our follow-up budget work session to this one, which is, what day is that? Next Wednesday. We are gonna, we are gonna have a few fees of planning and zoning wise, Sean's gonna recommend some increases in plant review and zoning applications. You know, we do an excellent job when there is a rezoning and notifying a lot of people. The cost of that notification, you know, is three, four hundred dollars, when your rezoning fee is only two fifty, it's not covering that.
I'd like to commend you, Brandon, in your staff for coming present in the budget that is less than what we're working with right now. Somebody's done a great job, we've got three or four department heads in here, and I appreciate what they do. Couldn't have got to this point if it hadn't been for very, very spending. I know the guys have done quite a bit, and it shows, and trust me, you've done a great job.
Okay, I was gonna say, I did hear you say you want us to put money to the side, but just working on this budget and finding things that we might have missed last year. To me, I don't really see where we're gonna be able to save anything or put up if we don't increase something, because we could everything, including, you know, I mean, I'm not a speaker, I'm an old employee, but, um, a lot of the employees do two jobs, a lot of us. And that's fine, I mean, speaking for them, but I just think that if we don't increase taxes, then I don't know who can put anything away for a future project.
In the original budget that we had looked at, you guys did projections of what we would have increases with the houses coming online and the developments that we have coming online, and it did look like there was going to be a substantial increase for a chunk of time.
In general.
Can't speak on that. So one thing that I don't think we realize as well is, and again, this is my job from a salary standpoint, right? Just a coal to keep up with inflation, if you do an average of two to three percent a year just to keep the ground power, you're talking about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of increased cost just to keep up with inflation on salary, so when you look at what we're bringing in on revenue, a huge chunk of that is gonna be eaten up just to maintain, and that's a reoccurring expense that gets added in every year, so every year the salaries go up, every year the three percent gets more higher or two percent, whatever it is. So yes, it is coming in, but a lot of it is gonna be eaten up if we just try to stay competitive from buying power, not even increasing people down the road. So that's what I think happened this year is just three percent coal level is a hundred and seventy-ish thousand dollars, so.
We're probably, as an employee, we're probably not gonna see it because I'm sure it's...
It's gonna go up as well.
I mean, either way, I'm just saying, it's just a thought to put in your mind, like, at some point, um, I've just been looking at it. Sanitation, we haven't increased it in three years. We can't keep absorbing it, rather keep it as a... I mean, that's just... I pay my bills too, but I just feel like at the end of the day, you know, we can't keep absorbing it because we're gonna...
And we can't keep not giving like our police, because then people are raised, if we do, we won't have it.
We can't quit not having new employees in other departments.
Right.
Because there's more people, there's more services, there's...
Yeah, to think about, keep it in mind. I mean, the projection of taxable value is a projection. Hopefully that comes to fruition, but, you know, if inflation stays the same at about three plus percent, a lot of that new taxable value and the revenue we get off of it is just gonna be kind of absorbed.
Is it time to start investigating a new business park so that we can bring in more build labs?
I mean, for a while, when we were dealing with Project Sprout, that took everything in the West Nashville Commerce Park. That project didn't happen, so now, you know, we've got about thirty-eight acres out there that we can... The business park is full, two existing buildings, the Shell Building and Build Labs is building on the other one. Where I would love to see the next business park or industrial park is somewhere where we already have water and sewer running through it. Obviously not dwainer property, but, you know, two million dollars, unless we can get some serious grant money to help buy that, or we're not gonna be able to afford to acquire that and turn that into an industrial park.
And then another thing to talk about is capital reserve plan, and if we were to do that, it could just be a tier every year, because I spoke to some people. And they're able to write off a little bit. What we did a couple years ago is we increased their bill from forty-five dollars to... That is a big jump, but that's because we did not get any. Instead of just a little bit, just a little bit, all people can absorb, you know, it might be a one or five hundred.
Sometimes, they adopt an ordinance that puts in a CPI, Consumer Price Index increase, that every July first, their water sewer rates go up by whatever that CPI is. Their sewer, their sanitation recycling rates go up by that CPI. In fact, you know, the last two towns I was in, we had it that way. It keeps, it keeps the rates in touch with inflation, you have small increases each year. Instead of like Tressa, you go four or five years with nothing, and then you get a big increase.
I like the idea of that, I just don't want there to be an increase when not necessary, you know, so I wouldn't...
It would take council action.
To build up a...
Because if we're really making revenue, then we can drop it and hit a break, but at some point, this is my thoughts, when I'm looking at the audit and now I'm learning how to read this, we are basically, we're spending more than we're collecting. This is realistic, like, not a fund balance number. What we bring in, we're spending more than that, so that's operating against. If you keep doing it every year, it doesn't work, I mean, we all know this, okay? I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm just, I'm... I'm just looking at it, I talked to the citizens and I had worked at the fire counter, and even though if we have a little increase, they're still gonna pay the fee. They're gonna close down it, they're gonna still pay the deal.
Better than a big jump.
But they would appreciate this. I'm gonna have you over community meeting, because I did have one more time, and they asked questions, I answered them, it made sense. But if they don't know, and they just go, I just can't take the job, to me, I think it's a little bit at a time, don't...
And show them the data, show them what we're spending each month and how much we collect, and let them see the real picture. Because we all live in Nashville, what we do, what we vote on, we, we, thanks to us too.
I recently reported this here at the mountain, the amount of gallons of water that we purchased from them versus what we build out. It's more.
But we don't, we don't account for the water that's used at our facilities. Here, town hall, fire station, police station, we need to begin doing that so we can keep an accurate track of, what didn't get resold and was used at one of our facilities.
It's not, it's not a thing that we're gonna build, but at least it shows where it went to.
Yeah. You got a calendar, you know where it went. Fire trucks get washed a lot, but it's not huge volumes of water, but, that's just saying it all on top.
Well, I think it, we probably used a whole lot last week, but I'm telling you, every one of the town we did, because I saw in the parade this past weekend, they looked like they were brand new. So these departments, these departments did an outstanding job trying to clean that equipment up, setting one out of public work.
Junior takes pride in it.
Brand is...
He takes pride. I think he cleans it daily.
Who's that?
Junior.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions about the budget? Well, I appreciate...
Maybe one thing you did to bring up, again, for the next meeting. Our Part F project for Motor Park came in, the low bid is about two hundred thousand dollars more than our project budget fund. So, some of the reason for that is the cost estimate we were using, when we put that off, from the time we got it till we got to this, it's been almost two years, and the cost has gone up. So at the next council meeting, next budget work session, we will have that on the agenda. We do have a request in through Representative Alan Chester for a two hundred thousand dollar appropriation out of the state budget for that project, which would cover that difference, but if we don't get that, we either gotta scale the project back or decide if you wanna take some fund balance money and put it to that project.
Can we scale it back since?
We don't want to scale it back a lot, haven't.
Well, I don't, I think it's been approved and so much money has been allotted, right?
We did a transfer this year, so we already took...
Do you know Ashley, if we know it's all that right, and he'll be here for the next meeting too.
I don't, like I said, we've cut back a lot of what we initially thought we were gonna be able to do to, what we could do with those, you know, the amount of money we have.
It took a lot of extra things off, and now...
Right, I don't think you can even meet the grant requirements if we cut it back more.
But we'll have that for the discussion next Wednesday, we... And that'll be for the...
George spent an extra little money, make that right the first time.
Yeah, we don't need to back off of it. We don't back off of it. Because if you're looking down the road, you're gonna venture to have it, you need to go ahead and get it in before it doubles in price. Which is already doubled, what we initially went to.
Well, it's increased.
It's increased quite a bit.
Well, I think, Ray, I'm just saying we might not have to, I mean, we clear up, whenever that time comes, because right now our head is already there, because even if it's not this year, it could be next.
But just approve the process of it, right?
But at the next meeting, the council is gonna have to approve contract with the low bidder for that project to move forward. Got CO on fire station two, or guys are in fire station two?
If you haven't been out there to see it, you need to go, it looks totally different with everybody out there and everybody smiling.
And I received a few citizen thank yous for what we did with the fire station, how wonderful it looks, and they're appreciative.
And it's so wonderful because the fire trust doesn't go by my house going to auto care all hours of the day, morning and night, so I'm real grateful for the fire station too.
Just because I told them to blow the cure at your house, doesn't mean anything.
Have we found the two to go in the building yet?
They're working on it.
It's been the hardest thing I've seen.
Any other questions concerning the budget? And again, thanks to all the people who put effort in this budget, we could not have a better staff than what we have here in Nashville. I'm so proud of each and every one of you.
Appreciate it.
If not...
May I be in the favor of goodness and move it with you, Jerry?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, let me go by saying aye, and I'll see you next week.